Call meeting to order, welcome everyone here this evening. We'll get right to work. First item is approval of the agenda.
Second.
Paul Faber, Ray Chan, thank you. Water allocation, Joe?
Thank you Mayor and good evening Commissioners. Just give a brief overview of your three topics tonight before I introduce the individual speakers. Your first topic is going to be on water allocation from your planning director, Michael Clark. Just a brief overview, water allocation policies are a means to provide developers with a list of design options to include in their site proposals, examples being enhanced designs, additional transportation improvements, and/or increased environmental protections. The idea being that those proposals with more options are rewarded with a higher allocation of water to build their development. The board will hear a general overview of how the process works and an example of how this process could work in Zebulon. Second presentation tonight focuses on the implementation of the comprehensive pay and classification studies. So the comprehensive pay and classification studies in general are routinely performed in most communities to assess the compensation responsibilities of their employees and compare that with other municipalities. The board will hear how the results of Zebulon's first comprehensive pay and classification study may affect the town's ability to hire, retain, and develop quality employees. This presentation tonight is the first in a series of how the town can strategically implement pay and classification changes to develop the staffing to meet the needs of a growing and diversifying community. And then the third and final presentation tonight will focus on the North Rendell project. At your September work session, the board heard options on how to address a variety of traffic issues around the North Rendell Avenue and Pierce's Road intersection. Option four in particular included an expansion of the existing scope to address traffic issues along the Pierce's Road corridor from North Rendell Avenue to Shepherd School Road. The board will receive tonight an update regarding NC DOT assistance at the intersection of Pierce's Road and Proctor Road in general that may affect what was discussed with the board at September regarding option four. With that, I will introduce planning director, Michael Clark.
Good afternoon, or good evening Mayor, members of the board. The first of the items tonight, as Joe mentioned, is in regards to what's known as a water allocation policy. This is essentially a process that municipalities can use to enhance the quality of development that comes into the municipality, specifically encouraging the desired activities and uses while requiring other more common activities and uses to beef up their standards in terms of the quality of the development that's being proposed. Now that we've completed the water merger agreement, the town owns a set amount of water and that is progressive scale, and it's good to make sure that we're allocating that water towards the uses, activities, and developments that's going to benefit the long-term preservation of Zebulon. So tonight, I'm going to introduce you to this concept and then also have an opportunity to discuss, is this something that the town would like to proceed with? What is water allocation? Specifically, as I noted, it allows us to require certain design elements in return for the water to be provided. It gives the developers a buffet list of options to pick and choose from to obtain the necessary points. Each use would be provided a set base point and then they would have to achieve a set number, either if it's a more desired use, they could achieve it immediately, but for things such as single-family detached residential, they would have to pick from these buffet options to enhance the development. It is worth noting that these enhancements need to be above and beyond what is currently required in our unified development ordinance. So things such as traffic improvements and all that, those would not be eligible because those would be required regardless. So this would be above and beyond or higher quality development than what would otherwise be permitted or required under strict interpretation of our ordinance. Finally, there would be a maximum points allotted per category for these bonus points. That way, you don't have a development that comes in and just maximizes one segment, but it's a distribution so the overall holistic characteristic of these developments can be better. The way the base points are structured is it allows for certain target uses to obtain 100% of those points already. Let's say you have to obtain 50 points. Something like a comprehensive mixed-use development that has a combination of office, residential, and retail, all built into the same development, that could meet that 100%, right away. Some uses, such as certain desired uses, would have mid-range where they'll still have to bring in some additional elements and yeah, a two-story Chick-fil-A with a giant filet o' caa would be kind of cool, but it's, this allows us to really tailor to what the needs are of our community as opposed to just picking up what the other communities do. Finally, the less desirable uses, such as single-family detached residential, which we have occurring naturally, these would have the lowest level of base points. In other municipalities in close proximity, they start out with 15 of the required 50. So how do you make up for those additional points? Well, base points, and these are broken into several categories. The first of which, as proposed, would be design enhancement or abatement of non-conformities, additional, meaning the architectural design for single-family dwelling units is an example. After Senate Bill 25, we can't just require those at the time of site plan anymore. And if it's a development that does not require a conditional zoning or plan development, this is an opportunity for us to make sure that those residential characteristics and architectural details are brought in. Additionally, we do have situations where there's non-conformities. If they bring in an additional parcel and eliminate those non-conformities, they could get those points. Additional transportation improvements. We live in a situation where there is a transportation issue that is compounding based on the new residential development. While we can require certain improvements be made based on the TIA as well as the comprehensive transportation plan, this allows us to work collaboratively. And it doesn't necessarily just be isolated to vehicle transportation. Connections to greenways and other non-motorized transportation can be taken into consideration as well. It all is going to come into how that policy is drafted. Or green development standards, which kind of speaks for itself. Outdoor enhancements, this is your landscaping and your other kind of quality of place elements. Finally, additional amenities. You see some neighborhoods that have very elaborate amenity packages with pools and pool houses and fitness facilities, and you see other neighborhoods that don't have any. This is an opportunity for them to get points and be rewarded for creating amenity packages that are specific to those neighborhoods. So we'll break down on how these categories could look. First, design of non-conformities. As I noted, we do have residential guidelines within chapter five of our unified development ordinance, but with Senate Bill 25, we're unable to require those at the time of site plan. So unless they come before you for a conditional zoning or a planned development, realistically, we don't have the authority to ask for those. Additionally, elimination of non-conformities such as, as well as infill development, such as this site here, where if someone were to infill a desired location, it doesn't necessarily have to be downtown. Other possible locations could be out by Five County Stadium or other areas that we want to spur the growth. They could get points for that. Finally, in some municipalities, they also have target development areas specific to their downtown. Knightdale is an example, has an old town area or old town district, which is the area around Knightdale Station Park up to Whitley Park. Infill development within that area gets certain number of points based on the type of development that's occurring. Transportation improvements, while we touched on, it doesn't necessarily need to be motorized. Bike paths, making sure that it's not just your typical mulch trail, but possibly something like an on-street separated cycle track, as they're being called now, which is adjacent to the streets in a protected area. Other improvements such as stamped crosswalks. Greenway connections could be an example, and these could be private freeway connections connecting to the public system. That creates an additional feature for those living there, also helps to encourage the use of our public freeway system. Finally, the big one is intersections. We have situations right now where our intersections are unfortunately not able to accommodate the traffic needs. This allows us to work collaboratively with the developer and grant them certain points if they go above and beyond what our transportation plan calls for, as well as what the TIA would call for. Green development is another one. And while we're all familiar with the green or the lead incentives in the four categories, there's actually quite a few different green certifications that these builders can obtain depending upon if it's a residential, commercial, mixed-use, the products that are being used. So there's several different ways that one could measure what is a green development. The other has taken even a different approach, is looking at ways to incorporate green techniques into the development, such as this bio-retention pond, as opposed to your standard SCM or stormwater control management. This creates a very attractive opportunity. On top of that, these, while they do take some maintenance to get started, tend to filter the water long-term much better than your standard SCMs. So it's opportunities like this that these points can be granted. Outdoor enhancements, while a sculpture of a dancing bear would be very cool, other forms of public art would also be possible. If you're over in Knightdale and you, the Exxon gas station, the Waylands, where the witch witches, you might see a sculpture out there. That was one of the ways that that business was able to meet the water allocation policies. They put a small sculpture out next to their seating area. That could be a possibility. Restoration and renovation of historic resources and historic buildings. We have several homes scattered throughout the town. There are these older farmhouses. Wouldn't it be a wonderful opportunity for us to encourage the preservation of these homes and the use of these homes integrated into the development, such as a sales center or other offices, as opposed to just plowing down these developments? This is an opportunity to grant points towards those saving. Finally, additional landscaping, entry features, enhancements beyond what our UDO would otherwise require. Finally, additional amenities. For a non-residential use, having outdoor seating such as this would be a wonderful asset, not only to that business, but to the community as a whole. The opportunity to grab a sandwich and sit outside in an area like this, not only does it help meet our goals as a town, but it could be a wonderful resource for the business and an opportunity to get the points. Of course, with residential development, your more typical enhanced amenity package, such as what they have in Wendell Falls, would be a possibility to grant points towards. It doesn't need to be that elaborate either. Something as simple as enhancement of a stormwater control measure where they put in a dock and a little gazebo on it, that could also be a method to create those additional many packages for residential developments. Essentially, how this works is there's points that can be allocated based on each of the categories with, as, just for example purposes, the total points required would be 50. Depending upon the use, you might hit that 50 right off, right from the start, but if not, you would have to pick up maximum points based on a maximum, you'll notice that no one category will get you there. So having to pick and choose that buffet option, this really provides for a holistic approach to the development. As an example, for residential development, single-family detached in this situation, it's alley-loaded, it could look something like this, where they get 15 points because they're a single-family detached residential. They're willing to meet the architectural guidelines set forth in chapter five, so 10 points would be granted there. They're going to make a private greenway connection to the public greenway system that's not currently required on our comprehensive parks and recreation or transportation plans. So that's five points there. They, instead of just having standard SCMs, they use bio-retention methods. That could be eight points. Outdoor enhancements, they have a nice entry feature with a median as you're driving in with a sign, and elaborate landscaping, that's an additional five points. Finally, they put in a small pool house and a lap pool that could accommodate maybe 200 guests. That could be 10 points. All those numbers added up would accomplish 53 of the required 50 points. In this case, they would be able to proceed with the development and that water allocation would be granted to them. For, let's say, a mixed-use residential or mixed-use development, this one's easy. A mixed-use development with infill in downtown, they hit 50 points. It's in one of the target development areas as outlined in the policy. That's 10 points. They're not doing any extra transportation improvements above and beyond what the regulations in the TIA call for, so there would be no points granted towards that. But they do want to put in a green roof and have a couple beehives up there to help pollinate and maintain that green roof. That's an additional five points. They don't let people up to the green roof, unfortunately, and so there's no real outdoor enhancements, so that doesn't get any points. But they do have an outdoor patio area that is specifically dedicated towards the residence that's in an enclosed area. So that's an additional 10 points for amenity package. So even knowing that they've met the 50 right off the bat, they still did enough that they were able to achieve 75. It doesn't mean that they get any more water than they would otherwise be allocated, but it's an example of what these two-point structures could look like.
So there's actually no reward for anyone to go over 50?
Not necessarily, no.
But we don't have to say that 50, you get 50 just because of the certain type of use.
That's correct.
We could say you get 20 and then you got a...
And that's true, but there's still, my question is, there's no reward for doing more than 50 or whatever that...
That's correct.
...standard is set at.
That's, that's correct. There's, there's no incentive to go beyond that 50.
Okay.
And I'm assuming your proposal would include any type of commercial or business development, even though there'd be no residential there, they could use the same process?
That's correct. I believe everybody should receive copies of both the examples or the policies currently placed in Knightdale as well as Wendell. And these are, they're slightly different, but you'll see a lot of overlaps. As an example, a hotel, which policy is this? The Knightdale policy, a hotel is only 41 points. Retail commercial center is 41 points. Single-use office is 41, where a major subdivision, which is a residential use, is only 15 points. Wendell's has something similar where they break it into, into those use classifications pretty specific.
Has the past boards addressed the allocation split between business and residential use? If we want a blended development, development in town, of the remaining allocation that we have, what is the determined split or is it basically wide open, first come, first served?
That's, at the beginning of each of the policies, they show what the split is based on their comprehensive land use plan, their future land use map, to really make sure that the water is being distributed appropriately based on those studies and processes that have already taken place. And from there, that's how they structured those base points. There was an abundance of residential coming in in both communities when these were created several years ago, so that's why the residential uses had the lowest points. But there was a lack of commercial to support that residential, and that's why they provided the additional points for non-residential uses.
Are we going to get a more detailed rubric?
Absolutely. This is the beginning of the discussion to determine, is this something that the board would like to proceed with before we actually draft the plan and the rationale behind it, which would... which would, which would come before you at the December work session? And in terms of procedure, we would also have to amend a portion of our unified development ordinance to allow us to enforce this policy. So it would have to go through a joint public hearing before the planning board as well, and then eventual adoption.
Oh, the question is...
Thank you.
Good evening. We're going to talk about the Comprehensive Paying Classification Study. We're going to review the basics of the study, which included all the departments for the town, but we're going to focus on...
Lisa, can you pull your mic down, son?
Sorry, I'm short. Apologize.
Thank you.
We're going to review the basics of the study, which included all of the departments, and then we're going to review the study results as it relates to the police department specifically, and then introduce an implementation plan for the police department. This shows the study map of the municipalities that were used when we did the study. We utilize these because this is our labor shed, and this is where we incorporated the municipalities within Wake County. They also found that employees that were working for the town came from these municipalities to work for Zebulon, or they went to these municipalities to work for Zebulon, or to work for them when they left Zebulon. This shows the labor shed and the starting salaries for a police officer. The starting salaries of a police officer in these 13 municipalities represent 76% of a higher paying wage or starting salary for those officers than what the town of Zebulon pays. This represents a map of the employees hired over the last four years and where they were residing at that time. The green pins represent employees who are no longer with us, so they were hired in the last four years and they have left us in the last four years.
Are those the ones that look blue?
Yes, possibly. They're not red.
Okay.
How about that?
Okay.
The ones that aren't red are the employees that have left us. So of the 13 hired, five have left, which is 31%. So they were hired and they left, and they left for reasons of wanting higher pay, work for a larger municipality, maybe they want to live closer to home, or they just left the police profession altogether. This shows where some of those employees went when they left our employment and the starting salary. When we are looking at applicants from March 1 through June 20 for the police department, we received 33 applications. Of those 33, only 13, or 39%, met the minimum requirements for the position. After looking at those 13, we decided to interview five and we hired two. In the current process, from July 12 to September 10, we only had five applicants total. So we are having a really difficult time attracting applicants.
How does that compare to applicants in other communities? Are their levels down as well?
To my recommend, my understanding, it is... Jackie, you might be able to speak to that better?
I would say yes, they're down across the board in the law enforcement profession, period, but ours are unusually low.
Okay. Thank you.
When we look at the applicant pool, we're seeing several things. The quality of the applicants is the big piece that we're seeing, in that, like I said before, only 39% met the minimum qualifications for the position. And when we did a more intensive review, we noticed that the 13 that, you know, met, that looked good on paper and met the minimum qualifications, they were not a good fit for us, and that there were possibly some that couldn't get hired in other places. When we looked at their experience, the minor, the majority, excuse me, had only just got out of BLET. They had no experience at all. And then with the lack of experience, that creates a safety issue for our employees as well as the public. So when we get to the new hires, when we look at experience, again, like I said, they are right out of BLET, they have no experience. In our department, most of our employees are, have less than four years of experience or over 10 years. We're missing those in the middle that are the mid-level personnel that are an important piece of helping to train the officers that we have. The other piece that this does is that without the mid-level personnel, we have a problem with succession planning, because when those 10-year employees get to the point of retirement, we have no one to fill their positions because we just don't have the experience there to do so. When we look at training, the cost of training is extensive. The field training takes approximately 14 weeks once they start, then after that is completed, we have three to five basic classes that are done in the first one to two years, and then, you know, hopefully, they stay with us. But what we're finding is they're moving on quickly, excuse me. Of the 10 officers that have left in the last four years, four were retirees. Of the six remaining, four worked for the town of Zebulon in less than three years before they moved on. And then you've got the cost of turnover. We have advertising, which encompasses the time to write the ad, run the ad, review the applications, interview, and get people started. The cost to advertise alone in the various places that we run our ads in the last two and a half years has been $4,200. Equipment costs to outfit one officer is approximately $9,000. Some of the equipment can be reissued, like a weapon, and some pieces of the uniform, but for the most part, it cannot be reissued. We talked about training and the cost that goes along with training, and we've talked about experience. But some of the things we didn't talk about experience is that experience isn't quantifiable. You cannot make up for lost experience. Just like when the mayor leaves, he takes along his, he takes with him his institutional knowledge. When these officers leave, they take their institutional knowledge. It's not there to be shared with those coming up. So you can't put a dollar amount on experience that it brings to the department. Safety, again, is an issue, and then the, higher the number of inexperienced officers, the higher the liability we have for the town. So Jackie, at this point, or Chief Winkin, is going to talk about her piece.
So over the course of the last 11 months, I've had the opportunity to assess our police department as they stand, or as we stand, compared to industry strength, industry standards and best practices. In May, our supervisory personnel went through a strategic planning process where we evaluated our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And this summer, we sought the same type of information from our community in a community survey. All of the things that you will see and hear tonight have been impacted by that strategic planning process and the community survey. The police department is facing three significant problems, and I believe they can be addressed through a career development program. Career development is a structured process that is utilized by an agency to provide opportunities for individual growth and development at all levels of the organization. It's designed to promote productive, efficient, and effective job performance and to improve job satisfaction. The problems our department is facing are not unique to Zebulon, and we can use the successes and the failures of our partner law enforcement organizations to define a program that is specific to the needs of our community and our police department. The police department lacks a succession plan. We do not have a defined plan that identifies and cultivates talent. We're dealing with a depleting and changing recruitment pool, and we've experienced significantly more turnover than we ever have. A police department should be constantly preparing the next generation to assume future leadership roles. Management and leadership training prepares officers for supervisory responsibilities. Earlier this year, we hosted a lieutenant's process. There were several potential candidates within the police department, and I evaluated each of those candidates' training records and found that only one out of the five potential candidates had the leadership training commensurate with a lieutenant's position. To this point, leadership development just hasn't been a focus for our department, but it is now. Our senior officers and sergeants should have progressive instruction that builds their ability to take on additional responsibilities. Leadership development allows for staff to think more critically and address the changing demands of law enforcement. As an example, over the last decade, crisis intervention training and implicit bias have been a major focus for law enforcement. But in this last lieutenant's process, only one of the candidates had those two courses. It's not a fault of the sergeants at the time, it was just a point that it wasn't a focus for our department. If we want our staff properly ready to take on advances and changes in law enforcement, we have to provide them with the roadmap to get there. Progressive leadership training puts us in a position of having a highly qualified line of staff to take our positions as older officers retire. Law enforcement throughout this country is battling a shallow recruitment pool. I was in a class two weeks ago when they called it a puddle, and I think that's a better explanation or illustration. Most significantly, we lack diversity in our application pool. Qualified minority and female candidates are highly sought after, and they choose to go to agencies that will invest in their commitment to employee wellness and development. In the last fiscal year, only 17% of our applicant pool were from minority communities, and 21% represented women. Though our application numbers have increased with the use of NeoGov, our HR management system, the number of candidates meeting basic qualifications are minimal. Lisa referenced the 39% early, earlier in the presentation. I evaluated a different timeframe, and only 20% of the candidates met minimum standards in all of 2020. Many of our applicants have an inconsistent job history. They've left several other policing jobs because they couldn't keep up with the demands and the changes that are occurring in law enforcement. The quality of our application, applicant pool has suffered. Highly qualified applicants are looking at our neighbors as employers because they pay more and they have a defined career path that will allow them to advance their skills and abilities with improved compensation. If we want to attract, attract a diverse and highly qualified applicant pool, we have to remain competitive, and right now, we are not. In a 12-month period starting last year, we lost eight employees, several of which had significant time in law enforcement. Some left for other agencies for better pay or opportunities for advancement, some left the field altogether, and others retired. We're experiencing a turnover rate higher than our neighbors and higher than industry standards. There are several implications to high turnover. Lisa mentioned the long time that it takes to hire and train an officer. It takes three to four months to go through a hiring process, and an additional three to four months for the orientation and training. So as officers are coming through that process, they don't count towards manpower. It's not until they can respond to a call on their own, by themselves, that they count towards manpower. In the last two years, we've worked 52% of our shifts at minimum staffing. That means just two officers are working more than half of the time. The results, this results in a delayed response time when people call 911, and there's also a risk to officer safety. We lack the manpower to properly support and cover one another. In the recent community survey, many residents discussed their desire to have a more significant presence in their neighborhood. You can imagine, with only two officers working, there's a reason why they're not seeing us in their neighborhoods as much as they would like. When we become a training ground for other departments because our young officers are leaving for better-paying jobs, the result is a less experienced workforce. With the loss of eight officers comes a loss of significant police experience. We have an exceptionally young police department. Half of our patrol division has less than five years of service, and this impacts the depth and quality of service that we deliver. There's also a cost associated with having high turnover. The financial implications can be significant, and as Lisa noted, uniforms and equipment alone can cost over $9,000. We don't build turnover into our regular budget, so we have to absorb the costs of turnover into our existing funds. So there's one solution that we can implement that will address all three of these problems in some manner. As noted earlier, a career development program is intended to provide opportunities for individual growth and development at all levels. It's designed to improve job satisfaction and job performance. Through training and experiences, officers develop their knowledge, skills, and abilities to make them better suited to handle the challenging and changing demands of policing. Career development programs are considered best practice in this field. Nearly all of our partner organizations in this region boast career development programs. Each agency must define a program that meets the needs of its own community. It's important for a department to take into account town mission, department culture, policing philosophy, community need, expectations for our officers, and desired outcomes. In Zebulon, we've identified four ranks that will allow officers to promote non-competitively before or in lieu of supervision. A succession plan provides a roadmap for strategically building leadership. It's a means by which we identify future leaders within our organization and provide them with education, training, mentoring, and support to ready them for the critical roles that come. On our plan to be promoted to a first-class officer, an officer must have two years of service and 120 training hours in basic patrol operations such as radar, roadside sobriety tests, community policing, and officer survival. Senior officers will be required to have at least five years and 300 hours of basic management courses, crisis intervention, and other mental health curriculum. Master officers require public speaking, intermediate management courses, police law, and incident command. Their total hours are 480 with eight years of service. Corporals will be required to have 600 hours of training, including advanced management and leadership courses, specialized certifications, and additional incident command. They're eligible at the 10-year mark. Now, our career development program also weaves through community policing strategies. At each stage... At each stage of the rank, officers must demonstrate their abilities in community policing. Young officers must present a problem-solving project to command staff. Senior and master officers participate in and coordinate community policing strategies, while corporals must implement new programs. Our goal is to grow officers' responsibilities in community policing through the promotional process. The benefits of community policing can be seen in our reduction in crime this year over last. This career development program is a natural tool for succession planning within our department. It allows us to identify future leaders and build their readiness to assume future management roles. But building a program of this nature requires a commitment to allowing staff time to train and to work on their career development. Career development programs are basic recruitment, training, and retention tools in law enforcement. If we intend to be competitive in recruiting, we must have a career development ladder that offers the potential for advancement. Police candidates do their homework, not just comparing salaries, but also varying benefits. Knowing there's a commitment to training and career development, opportunities for salary increases outside of merit is important to young recruits. Having a career development program that demonstrates our allegiance to employee growth will be critical in recruiting quality applicants. Non-competitive promotions allow an employee to advance their rank, filling an intrinsic motivator of self-improvement, self-satisfaction. Ultimately, we could have a patrol division full of master officers and corporals should the employees choose to take advantage of the program. Their advanced skill set translates into better service to our community and improved job satisfaction. Each level of advancement comes with a five percent increase in salary to appropriately compensate the employee for their improved capabilities and competencies. The Police Executive Research Forum recently published an article that discussed the workforce crisis that's occurring in law enforcement. They identified twelve ways for policing agencies to improve recruitment and retention. And having a career development program was one of the twelve. The training and experiences that come about by a career development plan helps officers feel valued by their department and feed into them staying longer. Once a career development program is established, officers have a defined roadmap for advancement. They know what training and experiences they need to be eligible for promotion. Career counseling is offered by supervisors, but officers can take ownership of their own training plan. Lastly, as I mentioned earlier, nearly every law enforcement agency in this region offers a career development program for their staff. Ensuring that our officers have access to the same opportunity for non-competitive advancement as their peers will reduce the likelihood that our members will leave for greener pastures. A career development program is intended to advance an officer's knowledge, skills, and abilities by providing varied training and on-the-job exposures. The program presented for Zebulon is unique to our community and meets our needs. It'll allow officers in Zebulon to serve our community in more meaningful ways. This plan is not the fix to all of the issues that we have going on in the police department. But it does positively impact a myriad of problems, including succession planning, recruitment, and retention. Can I answer any questions for you?
Sure.
Oh, go ahead.
I have a couple that, and they're not pushback questions. I don't want you to read that that's what I'm doing because I'm not. But how does our benefit package compare to these other communities?
I can speak to a couple of communities, not all, that were presented in Lisa's side of the presentation. It is fairly comparable to several of the communities in Wake County. It is deficient when compared to where I came from in Wilson.
So you said it's deficient?
Yes, like the health and medical package in Wilson was much more robust than it is here and less expensive for the employees.
So it really had to do with the health plan they adopted for the whole town?
Yes.
Okay, but the rest of the benefits were fairly comparable?
Yes.
Okay, that's nice. What is our current ratio per thousand of officers that we have on staff?
Ooh, I should have done that math. Two point seven? That's quick math?
Well, the reason I asked that question, I know the national average is three point five. So that's why I wondered if we were comparable, below, above, somewhere below.
It is very different across the country, ranging from one point seven to probably four or so. In this area, two point five to two point seven is about average.
Okay, well, if you just look it up online, that's where I got three point five out of curiosity, how we stacked up on that. So yeah, you would know more about that than me and I readily admit that. That's the only questions I have.
But outside the national average, I feel like that our community has some additional stressors upon it that might bring our need above that two point seven five or to whatever the average is around here. Is that something that you would agree with?
I do. I think the massive growth that we're dealing with and I think we're kind of, personal opinion, sitting on the cusp of it, that it's going to become more significant for us. We are sitting at the intersection of two interstates coming together. And the traffic that goes back and forth between eastern North Carolina and Raleigh creates some unique challenges for us. So I do think that we have some particular needs in this community that would warrant additional personnel.
So now, I feel like some of this study is a little bit complicated due to the workplace environment that preceded you. And so I think that there are some challenges there when we talk about the number of staff that left. You know, since I have been on the board certainly. I just need to understand exactly because with the budget, there wasn't a request for several officers. I believe, you know, it just wasn't in the budget this cycle. So what is that going to mean? Is something going to change once this ladder is put into place? Or is the overall goal is having the ladder to kind of stoke recruitment naturally? And then you'll be adding those additional officers in the future?
We've put together a personnel forecast based on what we anticipate the growth will be and have a plan that adds a certain number of officers each year to keep pace with the growth and the workload increase. There, well, let me back up one. We did ask for two officers in the budget. And priorities are what they are. And we had to make some adjustments for that. We do have one additional position that'll go into effect in January. And part of the hiring process that we have going on right now is for that position. We've lost two people this year since I've been here. And we're looking to replace them as well. I don't remember what the second part of your question was.
Just if, one of the hopes with this ladder, which has been talked about for years, but we're just now getting around to implementing it, even though it's been promised to these employees for quite some time. So I applaud that there's finally some traction on this because it's long overdue. But is this going to be one of the tools that you're using as far as your recruitment process?
Yes, absolutely. So I think it's a critical piece of us being able to recruit quality applicants. I think it's a critical piece in us being able to retain the people that we have. There's a group of our officers who have been here for a long time, more than ten years. And I believe that they're here for the long haul. It's the younger officers that I have concern over, that group that's been here, two to five, where we are training them to essentially go on to other places because the incentive is there for them to move.
Well, I believe that the prior mindset was that that wasn't a big deal. But it is a big deal. Clearly, we want to be able to retain these people that we have invested in. So just when I go through the, what is thirty-five and thirty-six, it looks like there is seven different grades. And are you saying that with each one of these grades, and these are non-competitive advancements, there's going to be a five percent addition? So that from grade ten police officer up through grade sixteen police sergeant, there's going to be a non-competitive increase of thirty-five percent from their base salary? Or is it thirty-five percent of the salary from the last pay grade?
They would be received, is this part of anybody else? Okay. They will get a five percent increase over wherever they're at from each step. And there's also merit left in there. But yes, over the course of ten years, would they receive five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five percent increase in career development?
Twenty-five percent over ten years, just flat career development just because they've stuck with the town of Zebulon and accumulated the training hours that are set forth in that ladder?
And built their skills to be able to take on more responsibilities, yeah.
And then on top of that, there will be additional merit increases?
Correct.
Okay, and so the ladder is going to top out because then after sergeant, it becomes a competitive process?
At sergeant, it becomes a competitive process, yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you so much.
Couple of comments and then a question. First of all, salaries, increasing salaries doesn't fix everything. And I really appreciate your holistic approach at looking at training, turnover, et cetera. Because you have to kind of look at the big picture. And the other comment is, we have money budgeted for tuition assistance. And so far, I know only one employee has taken advantage of that. I would like to have you guys have access to those funds immediately for training opportunities for your officers.
Well, they do have, right?
We do. And this has been a topic of conversation in the police department fairly heavily over the last month or so. There are two officers who, right now, are in the application process to go back to school. One to get a four-year degree and one to get an advanced degree. So we're getting there.
So you actually have access to two pots of money. Your training money in your own budget plus the tuition assistance money. Excellent. That's all.
The training that one would receive as far as instructor certification, training, any thoughts on, you know, someone becoming an instructor and then being able to train our own staff without having them to go and pay for training elsewhere?
So instructor school, I didn't list every single thing that was required at each step. But instructor school is one of the courses that is an option for them. Not everybody needs to be a police instructor. But those who are good at it and who would like to do it can take that path. And yeah, that is a huge benefit to us to be able to do some additional internal training. But I will say this, a lot of the law enforcement training courses that are offered through the community college system are free to us anyway. It's the leadership and management courses that tend to come with a significant cost.
Other questions?
Yeah, I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
How old would a person have to be if they want to come to be a policeman?
You have to be twenty-one years old to start.
Anything more? Thank you, Chief.
Okay, I just wanted to circle back with you on the presentation that we made to you at your September work session on North Arrendal. We had given you four options as far as moving forward. They were to proceed with the project as currently scoped, reduce the scope of the project, resubmit the project, meaning step out of the LAP grant and reapply for next year, or look at a much bigger scoped project. I'm going to give you updates on what are options one, two, and four tonight. So as far as option one, we continue to move forward in negotiating and acquiring properties. We have those six properties remaining that are in the red, and so we're continuing on that. We talked last time about you could potentially reduce the scope of the project and just focus on the intersection of Pierce's and Arrendal. We shared with you at that time that you would be stepping out of the program because you would no longer meet the criteria for the LAP grant. So this option really would cost you more. But I did want to highlight a couple of things that I didn't realize at the time or it didn't come to me when I presented to you in September. But as part of your FY22 budget, you budgeted funds for the completion of these two sections, the Joan Street completion and the work around the ramps to US 64. We are combining that with two other projects that you approved, which is your annual street paving project and the replacement of the East Vance storm drain. So when we get those construction bids in, we'll bring them back to you to see if you're still interested in pursuing this. A reason that we moved forward on these two projects is we already have the design, we already have the properties acquired. So no reason to hold them up while we're continuing on that. So again, we will bring you back the construction bids when we receive that.
Joe, can I ask a question about that? You and I had a conversation about, specifically Joan Street was what we were talking about. And I questioned the fact that normally a developer would pay to open up those streets and those costs. And you indicated to me that whenever they're developed, we will recover those costs. I wanted to be sure that we're still on that track.
Yeah, so that's what the ideal would be, that they come forward and they dedicate beforehand. If we're ready to move before them, we're going to have to enter into some sort of exaction like a developer agreement or maybe even an assessment. And that will be complicated, but there are tools there. We'll know more when we get the bids back on whether that property has contributed or if you need to employ a different tool to make them contribute.
Well, I'm just of the opinion that we should recover those costs because if they develop today, we would require them to pay them. Part of the problem with that is that the other side of the street is owned by Wake County. And we're not going to get any money from them for that, so.
Yep. So we intentionally budgeted short to keep us true that we were expecting that they would contribute. So I expect that when we get the construction bids back, it's not going to be within the budget unless they participate.
I understand. I just want to be sure that we're still on that track.
We are.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. The resubmit, this is just really information for you. You're not in this position yet. If you did want to resubmit, you would be looking at, to resubmit this in September of next year, so you don't need to move forward with this. We were just, for the sake of inclusion and making you aware of all your options, we put this option before you. The one I really wanted to talk about tonight, and the reason this is coming back before you, is when we last talked to you about this project, we brought up the idea of an option four, with the recognition that the problems that are occurring at Pierce's and Arrendal really go beyond Pierce's and Arrendal, because you have a lot of traffic being funneled into that, to that singular point, but you're having traffic issues elsewhere. And so that's why, as a town, you have moved forward with funding of the design of the Green Pace and Arrendal intersection, as well as the design of the signal at Shepherd School and Old Bun. And when we talked to you last, we wanted to have a conversation with NC DOT to see if the work that we were doing here and here could count as credit for a future LAP grant application. And what we came to find out is they are already doing some work. We had a heads-up of this. You remember Michael Clark made a presentation to you at the adoption of your comprehensive transportation plan, as well as the Northeast Area Study. He had made mention that DOT was becoming increasingly concerned with the intersection of Pierce's and Proctor. When we went to follow up with them about how they would look at counting as points or counting as dollars the amount of work we had done at the two intersections, we came across some interesting information that is going to result in, we need some information from you all tonight. And I think we added some extra slides there. Okay. All right. Since I've heard tell that some of you are interested and look at the engineering documents, this is what's called an accident diagram. This is the accident diagram for Pierce's and Proctor. And all these connecting points here, they represent the number of accidents that have occurred at that intersection. And when you look down here, this is the amount of traffic that's on Pierce's Road. That's around 6,500 annual, or average trips per day. And then on Proctor, they have, let's see, around 2,000. Now, that seems like a lot, but that's not a lot of traffic. That's about the traffic that you would see on a two-lane road. But when you look at the accident counts, that's a lot of accidents. There's a lot of accidents that are occurring from traffic coming this way and hitting with those motorists that are trying to cross Proctor, either going westbound or eastbound.
Joe, this is super hard for me to read on the screen or on this piece of paper, so I need a little bit of help. Each one of these little circles indicates a crash that has occurred, and then the arrow is pointing to where it actually happened?
Just generally speaking, anytime where you see these lines connect, every single one of them, it's an accident. I didn't intentionally try to get too detailed, but just, that's just, I'm trying to demonstrate that there was a, there is a lot of accidents that are occurring at this intersection for a, relatively speaking, minorly traveled road.
So this is 2018, and there were, and this is where I can't tell, it looks like 38 crashes?
That's a good approximation.
Okay.
The point I'm trying to demonstrate is that this is a lot of accidents for an intersection on a relatively low-traveled road, so much so that it got on DOT's radar, and they have come up with a design to fix this problem. They are planning to design a roundabout here, and what this leads to is a question before you all. They want to self-initiate a LAP grant program on their own, and so they are going to submit this as a project that they fund, they design, and they fund the design, and they fund the construction of on their own. The question to you is, are you willing to be an applicant, a co-applicant on their application?
What's the need for that?
It gives them extra points, okay? So if you're a co-applicant, you are, in essence, giving the 10 points that you would have applied if you had applied for a project this year, which you didn't. And so they're asking that you assign the 10 points to add to their application, so they can work on this.
So what is that going to mean for our LAP grant application process? This is for, I'm assuming, they want to get this rolling in 2021, and then for what we are anticipating, we would be, I guess, looking for that application on behalf of just us, the town, for 2022? So we would get that 10 points back again, or no? I'm a little bit unsure with--
Yep, so--
I feel like that's how it works, but maybe not.
Okay. So the next opportunity, really, the next opportunity for you to put in an application would be next year's cycle, which would be September of '22?
September of '22.
We actually have a LAP grant right now, but it's not comprehensive enough to cover what we really want to happen up on North Arrendal. So that's part of the question, do you want to proceed with that or not? In this instance, I'll give you my two cents, we need to say yes, we want to be on board, because it's not going to cost us anything financially, but when, it still has to go to Campo for, and stand up against other projects as well. That's my two cents on that, but we could let the current LAP go and then do a larger scope resubmittal for a larger project in 2022. I could all let it ride, Joe.
You did.
And, but we do have, you know, just going back, you know, to this re-scope and re-submit, one, I believe it's one slide back, or, I guess it was a couple. You have a couple of slides that aren't on here. It was my understanding that we were going to submit with, you know, under the LAP grant for this, this re-scope and re-submittal, but what you are asking for is to lend our, our support to the NC DOT project, because they are going to be the ones that are running the show and financing it and designing it, and then for the rest of this North Arrendal re-scope, we would be looking more towards FY '23?
Yes.
Okay. Is that going to, how far behind the eight ball are we going to be if we wait till FY '23 to start with the re-submittal process for the North Arrendal project?
We're already behind, but, so this is, the approach that we're putting before you tonight is continue with the project that you've got in hand, let DOT move forward with the project that they want to propose, give your 10 points. If roughly this time next year, we need to, need to resubmit on something else, we can do so then. But we're trying to make best use of the time we've got in the remaining 11 months before we would be in a position to resubmit.
How long is it going to take for the re-scope process to occur?
So I'm thinking you're saying, when we, if we were to resubmit a re-scoped project next year, when would we be under construction?
When would we be submitting it?
We would be submitting it September of next year.
And the, the project that NC DOT is talking about is going to be submitted this year?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions or discussion on that?
I don't see a downside to jumping on that project and giving them the 10 points on the board. I don't, I don't see a single downside.
I feel like co-applying is probably, my concern was just, I didn't want to lose any of that point process if we moved forward in the next, the next fiscal year. Okay, cool.
Let me also say that typically, we do not make decisions in these meetings. Time is of the essence on this one. They need an answer by the end of this month. So this is our one shot, so that we would have to make an exception, which is fine, and say, okay, yes, we're going to do that. We could do it with a motion, do it with a straw vote, whatever, but Joe needs to know what to tell them, and they need to know, they can't wait until we meet in November to get that answer.
And to be specific, they just want to know if you're okay with being a co-applicant on their application.
Correct.
Yeah, so I--
Call for a motion that we approve and sign on as a co-applicant for the roundabout at Pierce's and Proctor.
Second.
Okay, so we've got a motion, second. Other comments or discussion? All in favor? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay. All right.
This doesn't necessarily mean that this is going to happen, it just means that we've lent them additional points towards the scoring of the project once it hits Campo?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, we have a closed session as allowed by North Carolina General Statute 143-318.1185 to instruct town staff or negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken on behalf of the town, excuse me, in negotiating the price and other material terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property by purchase, option, exchange, or lease. So is there a motion to go in closed session?
I'm moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, we'll ask. Nobody here that's really going to hurt. So we'll just stay in here, because this is pretty, pretty simple. Eric, you want to present?